That brings us to an item on the agenda that is being presented by Selectman Daniels. So I will turn the table over to you.
Thank you. Well, good evening, board members. I'm very excited to present this next item. A few months back, we started talking about some of our policies and our policy book. And that got me interested and I was flipping through and realized that our policy book, as we also determined, was in need of some work. And I got very motivated and started working on the policy book in preparation for our working group. So that once our working group starts getting together and going over some of the policies, we can really hit the ground running and just get it modernized, updated as soon as possible. In doing some of the research, after reading some of the policies and doing some research from other towns into relatable policies, I started noticing something with some of their policies, their policy books, and started noticing recommendations from the MMA and all that in regards to a code of conduct policy. And so then I kind of veered my research into a code of conduct and started reading a bunch of different towns' policies that they had. And I thought it would be great for our town. We have nothing in our policy book right now that necessarily gives us guiding principles into how we should conduct ourselves. We have a lot of policies on how other departments should function. We have a lot of policies on how we should handle licensers and stuff like that. So what I did was I drafted a code of conduct policy that hopefully you all have in front of you this evening. Hopefully, you've all had a chance to read through it. The policy, you know, it just kind of sets some guiding principles on how our responsibilities that we owe to the town, our responsibilities that we owe to the town manager, the town staff, and then, of course, working as a team, our responsibilities to each other. If you would like, I can go through and read the policy into the record. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to read it yet or go through it.
I don't necessarily think at this point you need to read it into the record. I do know that we did receive in our packet. So at this point, if board members have any discussion that they would like to partake in regarding the draft, I think that would be appropriate at this time.
Chairman Troy, I have a couple of questions for Mike. Throw you to Mike.
Go right ahead.
Mike, you said you researched other towns that have code of conduct policies. Do you know, like, are there surrounding towns? Are they in the area? Can you name the towns that have policies like this?
Yeah, so just looking at the draft that you have in front of you, I pulled samples from, I believe it was, let me just pull that part up on my computer. It was definitely, let's see, I have Littleton, Carver, Arlington. Those are some of the policies that I used to draft as examples to draft this specific policy. I know Auburn has a similar policy. It's worded differently. But there are surrounding communities that also have a form of a standard of conduct, a code of conduct, guiding principles as to how the select board kind of regulates themselves.
I got you. And you said you had gone through all of the very thick book of policies that we have from, you know, maybe 1865 to 1999 or something like that?
Correct.
And you chose this one to start with?
So we don't have a policy yet in place. And my recommendation tonight is if we approve this draft, that this would actually become policy number one in our binder. We don't have any policy currently in the form of a code of conduct or any form of guiding principles for us and how we operate as a board at this time. I have tackled a few other policies as well, but that I plan on bringing to the working group. I just thought that this specific policy, a code of conduct policy, something that, you know, this speaks volumes for the community, it speaks volumes for us and how we work with all the people listening to the policy. I just didn't feel like this policy was necessarily one to wait for the working group. I felt that this is something that should be presented to all five members, discussed, and hopefully voted on.
Excellent. Have you run this by town council at all by any chance? Or just kind of pulling it from the other town, pieces from the other towns?
Pieces from the other town, the Massachusetts Municipal Association, got some guidance from them. I have not run it by town council yet. When I completed the draft, I did send it over to the chairman and asked him permission to present it to you all this evening.
Those are all my questions, Madam Chairman. Thank you so much. Any other board members before I give my questions?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, John.
I went through this and I do have several questions. Number one to Mike, Mike, this is a lot of work involved here. Polling information and getting information from various communities, from the MMA. It's quite extensive. I mean, you've got a number of items here. And it looks like there's a lot of work that probably wouldn't involve here. I'm wondering, did you get any help from the town manager or the town manager's staff in putting this together?
I did not get any help doing this. I pulled all this information. Like I said, I did the research and pulled the information from those other towns. I, trying to think, I lost my train of thought, sorry. I pulled this and I put it together. And I just thought it was something good that we could, you know, come together as a group and present. Again, this wasn't targeted towards anybody or anything like that. I just got really excited reading through the policies and wanting to update them and then stumbled across the code of conduct one and thought it was too good of a policy to let sit and wait.
Have you found any specific reason why you feel that the board needs a code of conduct policy at this point? Is there something that happened or is something that's bothering you at this point as far as any conduct that any board member is not following through with ethical procedures regarding the position of selectmen?
I don't, again, this policy that I came up with, it's not meant to target anybody. There is no specifics necessary. I feel, I've read through, after typing, after doing the research and seeing what other towns have, and then putting this together for our town, I've read through this two-page document countless times. I can't even tell you how many times I've read through it just to see if there is anything specific, anything more that I wanted to add. There's, I personally do not feel that anything in this, at this point, is, none of it is something that we don't do already, if I worded that correctly. I just feel it would look good to put it into writing to be able to have something to hold ourselves accountable for. Again, not targeting anybody with this.
Well, personally, I find it very difficult to accept the policy as presented because I feel that it's like saying that the board is a bunch of kindergarten students. I mean, there's a lot of things in here that are common sense. And if the Board of Selectmen aren't doing a majority of what's been recommended by you, then they shouldn't be a member of the Board of Selectmen. I don't know of any member or members that are doing anything to warrant a guide like this. I really don't. In recent years, the Ethics Commission has come about and the Ethics Commission has passed numerous, numerous regulations and training sessions for all public employees. And if people haven't taken advantage of going to their training, they should. The Ethics Commission speaks to, I would say, 95% of what's in here. If you're violating any of this stuff and you feel that there's a violation of how you deal with employees or with anyone regarding involvement in government, then file a complaint with the Ethics Commission. The last thing I feel that we need is a set of guidelines that prohibit us from doing our job as members of the Board of Selectmen. We are elected by the people. We work for the people of Oxford. We're there designated to oversee their needs. And I don't want to be hand-tied. I don't want to be handcuffed in any way. If I want to speak to a department head and get information from that department head, I don't want to have to go through the town manager every time I want to talk to someone in town hall. I just don't want to. I never have. And as long as I'm a member of the board, I will continue to handle myself in that capacity. I have never asked anybody to do anything that is not within the responsibility of a member of the Board of Selectmen. The town manager is a full-time administrator. The town manager has a responsibility to manage. I have never managed any department and nor do I intend to. I will ask questions, and I have over the past 40 years of any department head, and I will continue to do that. And I don't want to be babysat by a set of rules that I don't need to follow. I believe that we all have common sense. I have served on boards that were, believe me, not as tame as the Board of Selectmen we have right now. We have an excellent Board of Selectmen. We have differences. We have different ways that we agree on things. We may rub each other the wrong way at times. We may rub the manager or other department heads the wrong way on what we say or do. But you know what? That's politics. We are politicians. Whether you like the word or not, you are elected by the people. You are a public servant. And my first obligation is to serve the public of this community. And I'm going to do it in the best interest of the community, and I'm not going to want my hands to be tied. Can you imagine what would have happened? We have asked in the past several managers who work for us, we have asked several managers to turn in their resignations, for good reason. And we would have not been able to go to one of their department heads to talk to them about it. I mean, if we have a complaint against the managers, does that mean we have to go through the manager to talk to an employee? No, that's not right. It's not right. We should have common sense and the ability to do the jobs that the people have elected us to do. And I'm an advocate for every single resident of this community. And I will continue to be an honest and truthful advocate, whether some people don't like it or not. And I don't, at this time, feel that I could go along with this. I know that there were 351 cities and towns. I would like to know the percentage of towns that have code of ethnic policies for their Board of Selectmen. 90%? 50%? 70%? I don't know. I don't know. But I'm willing to guess that there are more towns that don't have an extensive policy such as this because it's not needed. It's not needed. If a selectman is not doing their job, then you know what? The people will get rid of you. I've seen it happen in the past, and it's going to happen in the future. We are privileged and honored to have a Board of Selectmen that works very well together. And I don't want to see, I don't want to see any board member looking over their shoulders every time they want to speak to an employee or speak to a department head or want to request information on the snap of a finger because a resident asked them a question. No. I'm not going to inundate the town manager with requests so that I can speak to people. I'm not going to do it. And I feel strongly at this time that I cannot support this. And without any further discussion on this, if it comes to a vote this evening, I cannot support it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. You know, I understand where you're coming from. This policy is not intended to tie our hands from preventing us from doing our job as a board. Again, this is just an attempt to put what we already do as a board into writing to show the town, the town manager, the town staff, and then our fellow board members how we will professionally act and how we will go about doing our job to best serve the community and the town of Oxford. In regards to, you know, having to go through the town manager, you know, there's nothing preventing you from going and talking to the town employees in order to let them know that they're doing a good job and stuff. But we, you know, in the one section, there is the town manager. And I understand where you're coming from as being a selectman and trying to get your job done and asking questions and stuff. But we also, you know, have to, you know, there is that, you know, a military person, that chain of command, and trying to regulate some of the flow of information through the town manager. Now, again, if for whatever reason we feel that the town manager is doing something wrong and we need to go around her to do something, then by all means, you know, we do that. We have that right. But again, this policy is an attempt to just put into writing what we already do. Like you said, like, a lot of this is in the Ethics Commission. A lot of it is common sense. But it's, a lot of large businesses and industries, they make a commitment to their customers saying, "This is how, this is how I'm going to help you. This is how I'm going to do my job." And, you know, this is just another way for us to make that commitment to the people we work with or all the above.
Madam Chair, can I just say one thing? Because I do want to address this because Selectman Sads had asked, "Had there been any facilitation with the town manager's office?" I can unequivocally say absolutely not. One of the things I think was abundantly clear to me is that even with Selectman Sads' past eagerness to look at the entire policy book, that it was a selectman's job to do that. I'm not here to write policies necessarily for the board. I just said that we had brought to the attention earlier that we did have some policies that were really archaic and that the board had decided that it was going to go forward with that. I do know Selectman Daniels had expressed interest in that. And so this was actually provided at the same time that you had received it from the chairman. So I just want you to know that.
Thank you. It looks like we lost Dennis again. But I will jump on with my questions and comments. Mike, when you were writing this, when you were relying on the policies from the other towns, did you review our bylaws, charter, and town manager's contract when you were outlining duties and responsibilities and her specific title within the town?
I did reference the bylaws and charter. I did not reference her contract specifically.
Okay, just because I reviewed this policy over and over and over again. And I looked at our bylaws and our charter, and it forced me to also go through all of the books to make sure that I wasn't missing anything. And I reviewed her contract. And to me, it seems like there's a lot of discrepancies and inconsistencies with the terminologies and the duties. And I just, I'm having a hard time kind of understanding and justifying it. In my opinion, adopting this policy would be a disservice to our board and our residents because we're their voice and we're chosen by them and for them. Limiting our abilities to adequately obtain information and act on their behalf would, in my opinion, not be a prudent decision. You said you're not trying to handcuff us to not be able to talk to department heads, but right in your conduct policy, it says that we would have to go through the town manager. So you can't just say you have to go through the town manager, but if you need to go around her, you can. Because if it's in writing in a policy, you can't. We are not a board governed by just one, and you do point that out in your memo. The adverse and conflicting opinions that we sometimes and often hold are a part of what makes us better as a whole. I love a whole. I love the fact that we don't all see eye to eye. It kind of forces us to think outside the box and truly work for the people that voted us into these seats. When it comes to revising and revisiting policies, I absolutely think that we need to come up in the times. But I just personally don't believe that this should be a starting point. I mean, we have ethics to follow. We have our constitution to follow. I think that this is teetering on ethical issues. And I'll be honest with you, I'm not in favor of this. I want to be able to continue to represent the people that voted me into this seat. And if it means that I'm going to talk to department heads to get information, then that's what I'm going to do. We need to continue to act as a board for the town and work together. It's not the decision of one person. If someone needs to be censored or someone needs to be taken off a committee or a commission, you know, that's a vote of the board to really work together and come to a decision together.
Okay. Yep, go ahead, Dennis.
Thank you. I'm sorry, my computer's been going in and out, so I missed half of this. But I'll add my, whatever you call it, two cents. Mike, he presented this to me months ago, and we had a good discussion. I've read it like he has many times. And I'm going to take my gloves off. Yeah, I disagree with you, John. There are times when this board is very disrespectful. I don't think we know our position at times. And it's one thing to serve the public, but it's one thing to be disrespectful. And, you know, you're right. I don't ever consider myself a politician. I know I'm an elected person, so that makes me a politician. But I don't play politics. I call an ace an ace, a spade a spade. I don't mess around, as the board knows. I've said a lot of things probably I shouldn't say because that's how I feel. You know, I don't have the entourage of people behind me in this town that other board members have had. And I definitely know that I'm on the low side of the board as far as opinions of many things that have been discussed. And I thought it would be a great starting point, you know? I told Mike we could present this, start with this, maybe look it over and stuff, but all of you are like, just going at it, mincemeat. You're just taking a guy that's put some heart and soul into looking at things, and I see it as the board is just like hammering him and saying, "Nope, nope, this stinks. Nope, we're not going to..." You know, you don't even give it a chance. You don't even allow it to go back to committee. I'm just so disappointed, but you guys can do what you want, and I'll shut up after that.
I appreciate, I'm unmuted, right? Yep, okay. I appreciate hearing everybody's outtake on this policy. I would also appreciate if the board, if we go over, maybe table it for the night, look at it again. I know the big argument is, you know, talking to different department heads. So instead of striking the whole policy and not moving forward with it, you know, taking a look at it and seeing if there's ways that we can adjust certain topics. Again, I think it would be very beneficial for us and the town. We have this huge policy binder, you know, four-inch policy binder for the Board of Selectmen with policies that, last time they were updated, I think the oldest one I did see was probably about 1974. There's a lot of micromanaging policies in there. And I think it would be very professional of us to adopt something in writing that, John, like you said, it's stuff that we already do. A lot of it's common sense stuff. But it's our professional way of telling people how we are going to serve them, being, you know, servant leadership. So instead of striking the whole policy, right, just throwing it right out the window tonight, maybe we table it and at the next meeting, pick away at it a little bit more until we have, you know, a good, strong document that we're all in agreeance with. Again, that just shows how we're going to act for, you know, we're elected for a reason. And we have a job to fulfill. And I would really appreciate, you know, instead of just throwing it all out the window tonight, you know, coming back with some adjustments that we can make.
Madam Chairman? Thank you. So, Mike, I just wanted to say thank you because I know I kind of came off the bat at first and asked some pointed questions. But I didn't give any type of opinion or anything along those lines. And my honest and humble opinion of this particular document is, I don't agree with it. I don't agree with it on a lot of levels. I don't even know if I would have used this as any type of starting form, for that matter. I think that it's very confusing to me. Because I do want to make sure I understand that you understand, that I know where you're coming from. I mean, I've worked in, I might not have worked in the military, but, I mean, I've worked for companies and I've worked for, you know, 500 companies. And I've run teams and so forth. And, you know, the only people we're really answerable to is the electors or the voters. But, you know, this provides, you know, I can be, people can be removed and people can do this and people can do that. And to even present it without even like a town council review, at the very least, I mean, I would love, I would love to know what his thoughts are on something, you know, along these lines. So, I mean, that's my take on it. And then I know Dennis made the comment about, you know, we're not even going to allow it to go back to committee. I mean, I didn't even know this was going on. I don't know what committee was doing this, unless maybe it was just he was referencing you and him. But, I mean, I got to tell you, I can't vote, I can't vote for this. And it's not because, I want to make it very clear, it's not because myself or anyone else on the board do I think that they don't follow this. I just think that, I think this is crazy. And it severely hinders what we can do. Now, I know a lot of people have been talking about, like, talking to, you know, department heads and stuff like that. I mean, I can't move in this town without making sure that I check with someone else. And that's not, it's not that, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to anyone else, but how about not being disrespectful to me? I can't help it that I live in town and people say things to me, and I want to try to figure them out. You know, I don't know- Uh, you know, I, I don't know where we go with it, but I. I would, I can't support this, and it's not because you haven't done a lot of work. I think your intentions are good. Um, but I can't, I can't, I can't support this.
Um, so at this point, I mean. I think it's my understanding from listening to what everyone is saying that. It appears that I should be entertaining a motion to. Not go forward with this policy, however, um, I will leave the motion up to the board. As to if we want to make a motion to table it, or if we want to make a motion to leave it here tonight.
I, I would personally appreciate it, um, hearing everybody's point of view, if we could table it for this evening. Um, I've presented to you something that I've been working on on the side. Um, and I've heard, you know, we'd like town councils to take a look at it. I'd really like to hear, instead of striking the whole thing. Um, you know, specific bullets. Um, that, that maybe you, you would like to see removed or changed in some way, shape, or form. So, so my recommendation for the board would be to table this. And I'm not, I'm not sure if I can get some feedback on the side from.
Is that a motion, Mike?
Uh, I'll make a motion to table this until. Uh, further research into it can be completed.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second to table it, is there any further discussion from the board? Call for the vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Carol.
No.
Sorry, I was on mute. Uh, no.
I'll vote no. That's three noes and two yeses, um, so this motion will not get tabled to the next meeting. Okay. So with that being said, it is on to the town manager's report.